So, since 2004, 2005, since the hurricane, we have had a trend in this community to, that we've asked citizens, residents, volunteers to come forth and bring us ideas. And we've been very successful rebuilding this community with people coming forward and bringing us ideas, many times avoiding the city having to go out and hire consultants to bring us ideas. What you have in front of you is a, from an urban design standpoint, a very professionally done, well-thought-out proposal, an idea, to whet your whistle. That doesn't mean that, as a policy, a city council has to go out and do it. It's, again, community members coming forth with ideas on how best to use a particular piece of property. This happens to be a city-owned piece of property. That was formerly a Public Works and Utilities campus. So, if nothing else changes, it's status quo. The property remains open in perpetuity until a majority of council decides to think about something else. That's the policy right now. If there is an indication from council members that you want to entertain ideas such as this, then we can certainly discuss that. Otherwise, we retain the status quo and we move on.
Who'd like to start? Go.
I'd like to start, since I started it in a way.
Okay.
I'm the instigator, I guess, in some respect. Julie and Julie had approached me after we had visited this developer, as they had stated, and all of us are from Chicago. And the reason that ties in is in Chicago, there's a neighborhood called Caldwell Woods, which is a number of homes that's built within a park, a county park preserve. It's a beautiful neighborhood, and it's been that way for over 50 years. It's used by the public. There's some nice upscale homes there, so forth. My motivation is, is that, is on twofold. One is, is, and it has to do with the folks that are sitting up here previously and who's sitting up here right now. One of the things I think we heard from Jerry Paul, for example, is, "We seem to work better together, and we have ideas, and even when we disagree, we happen to like each other and we respect each other." And we saw that even with the, some of the people that are not for this project but have expressed their respect for the effort and the concept of putting this idea together. I think this is a great idea. We don't know what the councils are going to be 10 years from now, 20 years from now, 50 years from now. There have been proposals to do other things on this property before, both commercially, once, when we went to visit it just last year, it was started because somebody thought, had approached the city about putting a assisted living facility there. And then when it came time to bid it, they didn't show up, and we had a builder who wanted to put in 45 to 55 cottage, cottage homes. Here we have something that's considerably more modest that, and we don't even know if a builder would be interested in doing this, by the way. We don't know if the numbers would work or so forth. But if there was a builder out there that would entertain this, and we were to entertain something like this, this is a way to get a number of those amenities for the city in a permanent park situation. Do I have three minutes? I just heard a beep.
No, that wasn't me, sorry.
Okay.
Wasn't my beep at this time.
Okay. So, anyway, I would, I would encourage others to also come by, come forward to us with ideas, so that as a council, we, as a council of who we are today, can have some influence on how this property is really going to be used in the future. 10 years from now, there could be a council up here that has no empathy to the concept of open spaces at all, and they put condos in there or something of that sort. We don't know. And may not have, it may not change in perpetuality. But we have a, an ability to solicit ideas such as this. I think this is an excellent idea. I think it's a quality idea. And other ideas, whether it's to put other types of facilities there, but not to leave it just as fallow ground. I think it's something that we should use to connect, basically, four of the five voting districts that we have within the city, because it's in that kind of a unique spot, whether it's Historic District or our three districts in the PGI, with what's going to be going on now with Impact, with the old Impact facility, and what's going on in Fisherman's Village, and the rejuvenation project that we're having in Gilchrist Park. I think this can all subside to that. Open space-wise, we are northwest side-heavy compared to other communities. In the best of all possible worlds, we would have these park facilities, we have more evenly spread out through our community, but they're not. They tend to be concentrated in the historic and eastern side of PGI for the most part. So, I just want to open up the conversation and just, I've made my feelings gone. I think this is a quality idea for us to at least seriously consider.
Lynn?
I'll go next. First, thank you both for all your work that you put into this. It's a wonderfully laid-out project. On the other side of that coin, I worked very, very hard for over eight months to try to get this job, and I have listened to the citizens, and I've listened a long time, and to many, many citizens in this town, who do not want anything done with this land right now. And I think we are rushing to judgment if we approve going forward with this plan right now. As was stated in October, we don't know what this, what this land may do for us in the future. We don't know what we may need it for. There are many, many options that are available to us, and while this is a great idea, it's an idea, and I think we should continue to solicit ideas and see what floats to the top at the end of all of this. But right now, I think we're moving way too fast on trying to approve something just to get something built on this land. It is not my opinion that we should do that. I think that we should keep it for future uses for all citizens in the community. We do own the land. We don't have a need to sell the land right now, and I think we should continue to leave it status quo until we find a use that actually makes sense for everyone in the community. The citizens have spoken loud and long and numerous. I received over 50 emails in this, in the last four days alone. I can't tell you how many people wrote letters to all of us, and not one of them supported this idea. Not one of them supported moving forward with giving the land away, or selling the land, or moving the dog park. God forbid we would move the dog park. And I have to agree, we've just spent a lot of money fixing the dog park up, and I, I think people want it there. They don't want it to be moved. I honestly, in my good conscience, can't believe that anyone would want to build a house that looks like one of those houses on a piece of property that's next to a sewage tank. And, and, you know, that would be the next level we would have to deal with, is the concerns and complaints of all of that. Under no circumstances should we ever consider donating the land to a developer to build homes on it, and then forcing them to build a city park adjacent to it that we want. The city needs to control any development of a city park that ever gets built in the city when we control the land, and I'm, and I don't support it. So, that's my comments.
I mean, I guess I'm with Lynn on some of what you said, is that when we went through this process in October, we heard loud and clear. People want to reserve it, and I believe it was somewhat my idea to put the library over there. But the whole time I've been on council, it's been considered surplus. Well, the citizens don't see it that way. They see it as their piece of property. And I think the status quo, you know, we can't make it forever. Everything we do here can be overturned at the next council meeting. Unfortunately, that's local government, the way it's structured. But status quo, for me, like you said about the dog park, we finally got the neighbors okay with the dog park. We've put the money in the fencing. We just did the groundwork. Then we had vandalism there. We put money in that. We helped them come to a solution with their doggy pools. I mean, the people, and there's already a parking lot there. To build another parking lot at this point, I would, I would just, I don't want to see another parking lot go in if we can avoid anything like that. And as far as the other amenities, the bocce ball was in Gilchrist Park, and it got exted out when we did the value engineering, and the bocce ball people didn't storm City Hall yet. I mean, they could be out there, but they haven't been here yet. So, you know, the Isles Yacht Club put in bocce ball courts, so, I don't know. I think there's a way to accomplish those other things if, if the community sees a need there, but I'm, I'm in the status quo at this time. Jaha?
Um.
And it was beautiful video, by the way.
It was very well done.
Yes, very well done.
Yeah.
Yeah, first off, it is very, very, very well done. Actually, in terms of movement, I might find it was status quo, but I did really, really like this, and I liked the concept, to the point where I even, I, one, I asked Urban Design what their idea about the highest and best use, and the opinion I was given was that it actually would be like a, like a South Port Square type of very robust assisted living scenario. And so, on that note, I actually spoke to a few developers and asked them about their thoughts, and they concurd as well. And I myself, you know, I concur in a sense where I think one thing we don't consider enough is that many of our residents, they get to a point with age that the house becomes too big and/or they have a health challenge. And we really are woefully inadequate in terms of having residential facilities for older people, despite having the second oldest population in the country. And I find that this would be, I think, in the city's bench, there's a very, very good use of space if it were thought of as a place where, as you got older, you can still live near downtown. You can still have, be close to be able to make use of the city's amenities, but have a little bit more help. And, and also, in addition to that, the plan, the way they designed that plan is very good in terms of the use of roofs, as well as the paths and what, and so I think that as a concept, if a place like that were to be built where you had this extensive use of paths, walking paths, and parks and like that, it would go very good with also, like a commercial residential area, like assisted living. And with this said also, and I'll probably bang this drum a million times, this also would help bring our ratio of commercial residential taxes into more of a sustainable level because of the fact it'd actually be taxed commercially, as well as giving year-round good-paying jobs to people. Because these are things we often don't think about, because a lot of us are retired, but for us to even have the amenities to take care of retired people, we have to take care of the working people year-round. And so, I do think that, maybe not at this moment, though I do think it's a good idea, I do think that a South Port Square type scenario, I think, is needed here, if, actually more than one, and I think this is a very good space because it covers many bases that are much used to many people in our community.
So, I guess it's my turn.
Yes.
I also think that this is a beautiful, beautiful presentation, and I love the creativity, and, and I think that that's, I was not in favor of us doing anything previously, and I continue to still be that way. I feel that we will see, once the new library is built, I think that we will start to see some, something emerging that will say, "This is, this makes sense to us. What comes next? What, what, what is that need? And what would logically flow?" It might require us to move the dog park down the road because it makes sense to do that, but I think that when we approach that, then the community is going to say, "Yeah, makes sense." And so, I think that for us to, to really jump the gun right now and do this, while I think it's beautiful, I just think we're pushing, it's just the timing isn't right. So, I'm in favor of us not doing anything at the moment, and, and certainly, it's a great idea, but I just...
Gary?
In case anybody didn't notice, I think this is a great idea. However, my motivation, and I go back to what I said last year, my motivation was is to start a serious, active, preemptive conversation on how to use this property for the benefish, benefit and the, and value for the city. I'm not really advocating that we get down to the, bogged down the detail in what the landscaping is in the dog park, or how many spaces the dog park, but to have a conversation, as Nancy is pointing out, we don't know what's going to happen, but I think now, as the library gets finished, and there's this, there's, it is a wonderful piece of property to do something with. And I think we need to have an active conversation rather than waiting for somebody to come in and say, "Well, you know, I'd like to build an assisted living there, facility here," and then we have a big conversation about all the, the details of it, or "Somebody wants to put in 54 cottages." I would like to see us have a conversation where we, as a city, take control of how the conversation for this piece of property develops. And when I approached Julie and Julie, and they, or they approached me, I should say, and we discussed that, that was the whole motivation. It wasn't that this is the way to go. There's no builder behind this. There's no money behind this. There's nobody behind the scenes that's chomping at the bit to build these homes. That wasn't the whole purpose of this exercise, but rather to have a real, serious, ongoing conversation on how to bring value to the city of Punta Gorda for this piece of property. It's already changed since last year because Impact was just purchased by Fisherman's Village. It's already changing from the standpoint, as we're already talking about, for example, one of the, one of the citizens brought up a senior center. Well, we're also talking about maybe putting some type of community center in the Gilchrist area here in a few years. But we should be coordinating that, so that we're not talking about one here and one there or something like that. I think we need to talk, because we have, in this area, when I say this area, I'm talking about Gilchrist Park, and Linear Park, and History Park, and, and the library, and so forth, a really unique set of properties that are being wonderfully integrated right now. When you look at what we're doing in the renovation of our harbor front on the west side, and this is a piece of property that should be integrated into this, I believe, instead of just a big sewage tank that's sitting there with a white fence around it, and once a month, you see a stainless steel truck deliver a bunch of peroxide. That's not who we are. We're, we're this really sweet, nice, special community, and whether it's to do a different type of housing, or different, whatever we do with it, is something that I think we should have the conversation now, rather than being a reactive conversation.
I, I, I don't think we are being reactive. There aren't any, we went out for requests for proposals. We did that. So, if we say status quo, then there is no, I mean, it just stays as it is, and the tank isn't going anywhere.
I know it isn't. It's there.
It's there. I mean, we've gotten it with your help, under control. We're not getting the complaints, and everybody knows if the red light's on to call that phone number and to report it. Yeah, the tank, we're going to have to live with the tank, and I think we've done a good job of keeping the dog park people happy.
Yeah.
So, status quo is good with me. Nancy?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think we do a lot of planning. I think our urban design team, hats off to them for all that we do around our community, and that we have done, as Howard suggested. So, I don't think we're really sitting back, and we'll be able to, you know, we'll feel good about whatever it is that we eventually do with that property. I'm convinced.
Yes.
And, but I just don't feel that it's jumping into something...
That's not what I'm advocating.
Yeah.
What I'm advocating is I'm actually challenging anybody that's out there to do exactly what Julie and Julie's done, maybe not...
Oh, absolutely.
...within their talents and so forth, but to come with, with these, these types of viable opportunities, because this may not be the right time for this, this might be the right time for this type of thing in five years or 10 years. We don't know. But we, I'm asking for the community to do just what these, these two ladies have done for us, is to bring these kinds of out-of-the-box ideas in concrete, manageable, and thoughtful ways, rather than through, through the talk over an adult beverage. To bring it to us, and us to engage with them in a very meaningful and direct way, with, with staff, with the citizens, and with council on an ongoing basis. I think we should be looking to do something with this property, whether it's now, 10 years from now, that's not the point.
The people that engaged today said, "Don't do anything with it."
Well, I understand. We had, we had, we had three people that could come up, and I, I know what's in the background. That's not, that wasn't the point that I'm making. I'm engaged, I'm asking them, those same people and other people, to do exactly what Julie and Julie have done, and come to us with their ideas of how they would like to see this area developed.
We would be open to it.
May I say something?
Just takes one council member to put it on an agenda. Yes?
We met with each one of you individually, and we got your feedback. Excuse me. We got your feedback, and we both felt that this was something that the entire council was open to hearing. Had we known at the time that we met with you, had you said what you said today, we never would have presented this, because there, it would make no sense to present something that you know is, is going to be shot down. But each one of you, I think you have to, if you remember our conversations, each one of you gave us positive feedback, that this was something that you would seriously consider. Today, what I heard was sometimes a complete 180 from the conversations that we had when we met privately. So, I think that what you need to do, and you need, need to accept responsibility as city council members, that when citizens do come forward, and you give them the encouragement to continue to proceed, then you need to remember what you said at that time and not change because of some emails.
Personally, I would just like to say, when I met with you, I looked at the, at your material, and I did give you feedback on what you were doing. I never said that I thought it was a great idea to go forward right away, right now. Those words never came out of my mouth.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that, that you never gave any indication.
And somebody went, one of these council members went, more than one, went to Howard and said they wanted to put it on the council agenda, and that's how it got on today, and then we have our discussion, so...
But what I, what I'm trying to impress, that my point is, is that, if, you know, Gary was talking about citizens coming forward with ideas. I listened to each of you speak when we, when we met individually, and I listened to you speak today, and I'm hearing sometimes a complete reversal of what I heard when we met with you. So, in a way, I feel that if this, if this is the type of thing that is common, that politics will, will affect your decisions, then you need to inform the citizens who do come forward and spend their own time to do something like this. You need to inform them that, you know, "I may be for this today, but I may be completely against it tomorrow," or, or, "I'm, I'm on the fence right now, but I don't want to do anything to discourage you beyond that." But, or to just say flat out, "I'm against it." Lynn, what you said today was 180 degrees.
It absolutely is, and I won't deny that.
Yes. But I've also talked to... But you have a responsibility to the citizens, to be honest with them, when they come forward.
But my opinion changed in the last week, based on the comments that I've received, and that's the reason why my opinion changed. I have to listen to the people that live in this community, because they are the people who elected us to represent the city.
I understand that.
And when the citizens speak en masse, that's what I listen to.
I understand.
This isn't about what I want. Nothing in the city that happens is about what I want. This is about what the citizens that live in this community want, and if the citizens are telling me that's not what they want, then that's what I have to represent to, to the other council members. I'm sorry, that's, it has changed, and I'm not going to deny that at all. I haven't...
But what you do is you send a message for anyone else coming forward, that whatever I say to you today in private, I may change later, and I think that's...
And let me just frame this, and then we can have Howard chime in and then be done, is that we get proposals all of the time. Even staff comes up with proposals, and he floats them to us one-on-one at our briefings. And it takes one person to get it put on an agenda, okay? So, somebody must have said, "Yes, we want to hear this." No decision gets made until this discussion at this dais takes place.
That's right.
We can't even talk, okay?
I understand.
So, this is a big part of, I know, I'm sorry you're taking this a little personal, because your work is outstanding, and I think I reflected that to you. I thought your video and everything was so detailed and so great. I never once said, "I think we should do this tomorrow." That never came out of my mouth.
I'm not saying that.
Okay. So, I think the process is a little, you know, and once this goes out on a council agenda, that's a lot different than you and I sitting in a room looking at it on a laptop computer. And that's where things evolve and things change, and we engage the public, and then they show up today and they give us their opinions. So, the process may not be so friendly, as friendly as it should, and we get proposals all the time, and some of them never even make it this far, you know? So, kudos to you guys for, you know, making this far and, and creating something beautiful, and, you know, consensus is, at this point, I would say, not to move forward at this time. So, I'll let Howard chime in, and then we'll wrap up.
This is called local government in the state of Florida. When there are many times, well, every two weeks, as a city manager, I meet with the council members one-on-one to go over the agenda, and staff has, has recommendations on a lot of the items. Sometimes council agrees, sometimes they don't. Sometimes we come out of the one-on-one, and I may think it's going to go in a certain direction. And then when council members have an opportunity for the very first time to discuss a topic, and they're all here together, that's when they can get input from one another that they can't get through our one-on-ones. City manager is not allowed to tell another council member what the other council members are thinking. So, a lot of times, what we think may, what we think as staff may happen, doesn't, it turns out differently when it gets in front of the council. We do not take this personally. It's just part of the way we do business in, with the sunshine law in the state of Florida, and, and that's how we operate. So, it was a discussion, the council members up here heard each other for the very first time.
I'd just like to make one final quick point, and I, I do thank each, each and every, I do thank each and every one of you for your serious consideration. I really do. We're living in an era where sometimes the information that we receive and the news that we see can also be biased as well, okay? So, factor in the people that may have contacted you through emails and such may not represent the entire citizen community, especially now, you know, it is summer and people have said, you know, half of our residents are gone right now. So, one of the things that we are going to encourage, had you gone forward with this design, was to, was to conduct a community survey, similar to what you're doing with the Aquatic Center at Gilchrist. So, perhaps at some future point, per what Gary was suggesting, that you may want to go forward and ask the community in a survey, perhaps through Team Punta Gorda, what the best, highest use, most popular use of this land would be. I think Julie and I really wanted to try and preserve as much of this, of this land for public use as, as possible. And to Gary's point, we really don't know who's going to be on council in two years, four years, six years, and it would be a shame if your efforts for beautification and for open space could be lost, and that's a risk that we run. So, it's, it's great to be proactive, maybe go forward with some sort of a survey, and ask the people what their wishes might be. Thanks.
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 Thank you.
Okay.
So, it's the status quo.
Status quo. Recommendations from city officers. Howard?
I do not have anything.
Whoa.
Neither do I.
What? City clerk, she's got stuff.
Yeah, I have something. As we do at this time every year, with the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference coming up, the city council needs to select a voting delegate for the business meeting, and if, if you would like, you can also select an alternate in case that person can't serve. Someone else attending the conference could possibly attend that business meeting, so...
I'm definitely willing to be the delegate.
I nominate Rachel.
Thank you.
I second.
You want to be my backup?
Yeah, I was last year, so, sure.
Okay. And anybody can go to the business meeting. It's just I'm the one with the little cards, if we have to go to the cards, and we've had to go to the cards before, so, but you can still attend a business meeting and just see what the business is.
And just in case you should not be able to attend, and Nancy does that, you do have to register at the conference as the voting delegate, just for your information.
Oh, I do?
Yes, you would have to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, if, if I can't go or...
Right.
Yeah, we can let them know.
And I will fill out the forms and send those into the Florida League of Cities for that.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to boards and committees under vacancies. We have two unexpired terms on the Board of Zoning Appeals, one for an alternate and one for a regular member. We have a three-year term as an alternate on the building board. We have an unexpired term on the Burnt Store Isles Canal Advisory Committee. We have two three-year terms on the Planning Commission. And we have one unexpired term on the Punta Gorda Isles Canal Advisory Committee. Moving on to nominations, we have one unexpired term on the building board. We do have one eligible applicant, if you'd like to nominate and appoint now.
I nominate.
Unnominate.
Yeah.
Nominate and appoint?
Yeah.
Second?
We nom, they nominated and seconded Mr. Thornberry to the building board. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Okay, quickly... Okay, quickly, I know when, a while back, we passed a resolution to recommend that Susan Haney, President of the Florida League of Cities, be appointed to the CRC that the Jerry Paul was talking about this morning. She did not get appointed, but our friend Carlos Baruf is the chairman of the CRC, so I just wanted to share that information with you. I thought that was very interesting.
Hmm.
Mm-hmm. Do we have any other policy and legislation? No.
I don't think that Gary or Lynn or Jaha have the pleasure of knowing who he is.
I missed the what?
He was the chairman of the Swift Mud Board back when we, that's why we have Jerry Paul.
Okay.
I kind of picked up on that.
That's why we needed Jerry Paul.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think we've got plenty of work.
Yeah, so he's the chair of the CRC. Did attend the nominating committee for the Florida League of Cities, and we have two strong candidates for second vice president. It's not going to be an easy decision, but it was a very, very good meeting. And we, the Southwest Florida League and the Minnesota League, we're talking about having a, a joint meeting sometime, so that's a step in the right direction, too, so. All's good, and hopefully you all attend the conference if possible. You'll get a lot out of it. And registrations are open. Karen will take care of all of it for you.
Oh, okay. Did you send us an email?
Yesterday, I think, or the day before.
Oh, you did?
Yeah. And that's all I have. Jaha?
I'm good.
Well, nothing.
I love you.
I got beat up pretty badly. I mean, you know, all I'm doing is talking for the citizens. I mean, that's my job, so I'm sorry they don't like it. That's just the way it goes sometimes.
Nancy?
I'll just say, I, I realize that, but sometimes we, I think we're also required to be stewards of the community as well, and sometimes, in, in combination. And it's, it's, so.
It's a balance.
Don't take it personal.
Yeah.
Oh, I, no, I mean, I, I would have quit a long time ago. I like things like that, huh?
Citizens' comments, any topic?
For those of you who don't know, Ray Rowe, citizens of Punta Gorda. I've been sitting in this room now for about 13 years, second set of seats, in fact. I would kind of ask that you remember and recall that historically, the people that sit out there and say no are generally a minority that have a very strong, not in my backyard or other type mentality, and they organize well, and it doesn't matter with the city of Punta Gorda, the county you don't see very much, but nationally or statewide, the negatives tend to be overheard and overrun. The people that are in favor say, yeah, it's good, life is good, and it's okay with me, but you don't hear them in this room. So I kind of reiterate what was just said, that you guys are elected by the citizens as a whole, not necessarily the people in the room. By the way, you guys that are remaining probably did the best job of coming in factually, talking about facts rather than off-the-wall remarks of any what I've heard in here, but please remember that once you're elected, you really represent everybody, both the silent majority and the noisy minority, or majority as they may be, and that's not a comment to any person in the room, just a general observation. You guys do a good job.
Thank you. Any other citizens' comments? Seeing none, we are adjourned.